Okay, call this meeting in order.
...... by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Honorable Mayor Kevin Windell.
Present.
Councilmember Jeff Morford.
He's excused.
Okay. Councilmember Doug Shasso.
Here.
John Capers.
Here.
Bill Garcia.
Here.
Lauren Boyatt.
Here.
And James Parks.
Here.
All right, next our public con-comment or audience participation for things that are not on the agenda. So if you want to speak, come up to the diocese, sign in beside it.
Good evening.
Hello.
All right, so my name's Tony. I live over here off of Warner Street, Ward Three. The reason for me coming here tonight is to speak about the crime and drugs. It's getting out of hand and out of control out, you know, here in Fort Morgan. We've had issues with a particular house in our neighborhood. It's almost daily. These people are in and out, doing, I mean, they're, they're on drugs, they're doing drugs, they're leaving, you know, they're high out of their minds, stumbling over their own feet. Several instances where I've had people in my backyard, in my front yard approach me from this house, people trying to break into cars. And it seems like every time we call the police, it's always, there's nothing we can do, our hands are tied, the law's the law, you know. It's not acceptable no more. You know, I mean, where, where it's getting to the point where these people are starting to approach people's families, trespass, we got a lot of kids, we got a church right there on the corner. They're going into the church, they're harassing the kids, they're, they're harassing the area. And it's not just in my area, it's Fort Morgan, everywhere that we go. I've had a couple conversations, you know, Chief Lauren here, where I've, I've asked you, someone comes onto my property and, you know, what are, what are my rights? What am I allowed to do? And it was stated that I have to call you guys, let you guys handle it. So I made the comment, well, okay, I understand, I can't do nothing, I can't attack them if they're stealing, you know, toys out of the backyard or anything like that. But what if they're attacking my family? What if they're attacking my wife? Call us, we'll handle it. Said, I'm not allowed to do nothing? No, no, you need to call us and you need to ha- or you need to let us handle it. Well, I'm telling you right now, that's wrong, okay? One of your deputies came up to you the other day and asked you what was said, and you rebuttled and said, well, no, if they're attacking your family, you do what you gotta do. Well, that wasn't, that's not what was said to me, okay? At this point, I, I'm not sure, you know, what can be done. I mean, they're coming in, there's a hotel, deluxe motel, right around the corner from where we live, and they're being housed there. They're, they're constantly being arrested out of there. They're constantly going back and forth from this house to that motel, and they're stealing stuff out of stores, go and pay for these drugs. I've watched hand-to-hand transactions. I've, I mean, none of them go to the front door. They're always walking around back. They're instructed to go to the back door. I mean, it's not even an attempt to go to the front door, they just go straight to the back. So that tells me that they're being directed to go out of sight where they can manage these transactions. And, you know, you can say it's all speculation, but, I mean, we're, we're not stupid. No one here is stupid. We're not in the position where we're at today in not knowing what's going on. I've talked, talked with several of my neighbors, they got their concerns as well. I mean, one of the gals, her car was almost broken into, they chased them, chased off this lady that was trying to break into her car, tried going into their, or my next-door neighbor's backyard. She's the one that went to the church and terrorized these kids. I, I guess not terrorized, but scared them. She went in there not knowing where she was at, not knowing what she was doing, stumbling over herself, and she ended up taking out, off out of the back door and trying to get into somebody else's backyard. She was eventually picked up. Some, several of these individuals have been arrested on warrants out of that house. It's been stated to me that there's been upwards of over forty, I think it was right around forty-six arrests within the last year out of that house alone. Three times of which, there's been several individ- or three, three separate times where they've had to go in and revive these people, CPR, bring these people back to life because they've been overdosed. So it's getting, we're getting the feeling that it's just, it's not being handled the way it needs to be handled. You know, there used to be a point in time where the law stood for something. The cops came in, they did what was right, and they didn't do it to protect their jobs, they didn't do it to protect their lives, they did it to protect the community. And I was given a, a statement that a certain officer wasn't going to lose their jobs to do what was right. They were going to do what the law said, and that's unacceptable. You know, I get that, you know, the new day and age, drugs are all the rave. Let's legalize whatever drug we can get our hands on and let people go out there and have their fun. Well, not, not in my community, I'm not going to tolerate it. And that's why I'm here today. You know, there's several people here today that are to speak on that behalf as well. So I don't know what can be done on the council level to try to turn this around, but I'm here to push you guys to make that happen.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks for your comments.
Yeah, appreciate it.
What, what's your first name?
My name's Salvatore.
All right.
Okay, what's your address?
I'm sorry?
What's your address?
Seven one eight Warner Street. The house that I'm speaking about is seven fifteen Warner Street.
I'd like you to, you know, Warren, get with you before you leave here and get some information so we can deal with this.
We have spoken, he's also spoke with his deputy chief this week, and he's right, there's forty-three calls, I believe, was the number, just the last few months, we've been there a lot, we've made several arrests, including one he described about, and the lady was arrested again the very next day. At a different location. So he's right, we're having a lot of problems.
Well, see, and that's who's me too, found out that she was getting out of jail for quite some time, so to find out she was released, released the next day, that there proves my point.
Well, understanding that we have no control over that, judge has set law.
That's a judge.
Okay, we, we cannot discuss it right now, for things not to be discussed, so.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Hello, I'm Eric Sagel. You might know me or not, I don't know. But I'm actually, I live at seven seventeen Warner, and so I'm right across the street from Tony, and I just want to kind of corroborate his story. Everything he is saying is, is very, very truthful. We've noticed it for several months now, lots and lots of traffic on my neighbor to the south, seven fifteen Warner. I was actually acquaintances with him, and he's a very, very nice gentleman, and I'm not sure his age, I know he's approaching, he's around seventy years old. Very, very nice man. We've had several conversations. From my side of it, I can attest to, I believe it was his granddaughter that moved in with him. He, he's had his, his grandchildren's lived with him before, just to kind of, basically, just to help him out, I would assume. I didn't really talk with any of them. But it seemed a short time after she moved in, we started seeing some other people that definitely, I'm not trying to be a judge of, of character, but just from appearance, looked like they'd probably had a past with drugs. And then a short time after that, I started seeing shopping carts filled with just random things appearing on the side of his house. Unfortunately, I can see the side of his house, from my kitchen window, we share a fence. So it's kind of hard not to see things. And the traffic going in and out of his back door and his garage door has increased exponentially. There's almost always somebody new with a backpack going in and out of the house, constantly. There's bicycles being parked on the side of the house, they usually go through the south side of the house, but sometimes the north side of the house. I've had to personally call the, the police from altercations that I've heard in the backyard, screaming, yelling at each other. I just didn't know what was happening, and I didn't want to interfere, so of course I called the police. And they came in and defused the situation. And I noticed that there had been an increased police presence for a while, there was a lot more patrols going through the neighborhood, and activity definitely slowed way down. But then the patrols kind of started to taper, which I'm sure they're all over the place. I know shorthanded and everything else, I understand that. But after that, then, of course, activity began to increase again, started seeing more and more people. We see a few of the same, and then a few new faces every now and again. They're just constantly coming and going. I just, it, it's unacceptable, and we would definitely like to see something happen. So I just wanted to kind of support Tony and, and all my neighbors on Warner Street, because we are all fed up with it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Since we do have so many people, usually at this time, there is a three-minute time limit, so I'm going to use that so we make sure that we get everybody a chance to speak.
Awesome. So my name is Pauline Reiber, and I just wanted to let you guys know, we are, there's a group of us here today, we're from a class called F L T I, Family Leadership Training Institute, where our class learns civic leadership skills for their family and their community. I just wanted to let you guys know that we did bring interpretation with us in because our class is primarily taught in Spanish. And Mary is presenting with the Family Center, and this is actually a program of that. We may be leaving early so that our class can go back and discuss what we've seen tonight, and I just wanted to let you guys know that in case you're like, oh, it's seven o'clock, they all walked out. But that way you guys also know our wonderful interpreter Bianca is back here interpreting everything into Spanish. And then we also have it being interpreted by Elena into Acateco for our Acateco speakers. So, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Pauline.
Thank you.
My name's Chelsea Black. I'm also calling, or I'm here for the issue at seven fifteen Warner. I live at seven thirty-six Warner. I've lived there for nineteen years. I've been acquainted with the guy that lives in seven fifteen Warner since we moved in, bring him Christmas cookies every year, very nice guy. Again, I just want to kind of back up what they're saying about what's happening. Last Wednesday, I don't know what time it was, it was in the evening, but it was still light outside. I watched a lady come up and try the door handles on my car. I went out, I approached her, at which point she took off and went into the church on the corner, and they shoot her out. Then she approached a neighbor who's not here tonight, he's still at work, went into his backyard. And so the whole time we were on the phone with nine-one-one, they did come, the people from the church came and talked to me, they were very scared, they were having a kids program in there that night. And this gal just came in yelling and screaming about people trying to attack her, which is what she had said when she came to my house, or when I caught her. She said, I was looking for a ride. You don't look for a ride that way. And both me and the neighbor whose yard they were in did let the cop know, we would like to press charges if we can. Like, if something has to happen, he did say he had to go get a couple more reports. That was last Wednesday. So for the past six days, we have not been contacted to press those charges. I have a fifteen and seventeen-year-old daughter, our daughters, the neighboring, that I was talking about has four young children. So this is the neighborhood I chose to live in for nineteen years. I've done, we just finished doing a lot of construction on it. It's my home. It's where I raise my kids, it's where I brought them home. I take Christmas cookies every single year to my neighbors. And these people are single-handedly ruining our neighborhood. The trash, the shopping carts, the, the people wandering up and down. I'm, I'm happy for the police presence when it is there, but when it's not there, it's just scary. I, I also, I, I work at a gym first thing in the morning, and it is terrifying to have to walk out of my own home with my keys in between my fingers, not knowing who's going to be coming around the side of my car. We've called, and we've called, we've approached them. The, the man who lives there, I don't know if, how sound of mind he is, if, if he knows what's going on, but the rest of us are very acutely aware. And so we just, we don't know how to turn this into a zero tolerance thing. I watched a gal got, get arrested. I watched on mobile patrol. I saw her intake, I saw her release, and I saw her back in my neighborhood within three hours, where my kids are at, where I, my nieces are at, where my children babysit other people's kids. Nobody can play outside anymore. We don't know what's going on in the alleys when the dogs bark. So I'm just here kind of to back up our neighborhood.
Thank you.
Bet you guys can guess why I'm here. As I was saying, my name is Mike Black, born and raised here, left for ten years, now I live at seven thirty-six Warner with my wife and our children. And I've spent a lot of time in big cities, and I'm really sad to say that a lot of that big city crime and drugs is coming right to our neighborhood. And the most worrisome part is that when we call nine-one-one forty-three times, we have to come to council because we don't even feel like calling the police makes us feel safe anymore. Nobody else said it, but that's a drug house. Seven fifteen is a drug house. There is drugs being dealt there, there is drugs being done there. And I hope that the seven, the forty-fourth call is not because somebody was raped, murdered, robbed from their house. You know, we can't prevent what's going on inside there, and I know that the cops can't go in without probable cause, but forty-three calls to the same address is probable cause, and we're putting the city on notice because that's, nothing's been done. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here because Fort Morgan has been chosen to have a new mural. This is the America Family Global Roots mural. We were chosen, it's an exciting thing to me. I, this is basically the same group that our first mural that we did fourteen years ago was the same group that gave me that idea. I have followed them for all that time. And I personally have had ten pieces that have been part of murals that are all throughout the United States. When I saw back in January that we had the opportunity to apply to have a mural come here, I was excited. I actually tried to get some other groups to take this on, but nobody seemed to step forward. So I contacted the mayor and said, are we interested? And he contacted a few people and said, yes, let's go for it. So I, on January first, no, January first, February first, I turned in the application for that. Again, this is what happens to me is, I turn these things in and go, will Fort Morgan even have a shot at it? Maybe we will. But, so I turned it in and kind of, you know, but we'll do our best. On the fourth, I was contacted again by them and said, are you guys really interested? Do you have the funds? Are you guys interested? And I said, mayor, are we really interested? Because they are interested in us. And he checked around, and yes. And so what they needed from us was a three hundred and sixty-degree pictures of the site. And I'm like, uh, where's the site? So again, I come back, and we had different places that I looked at. And after looking at it and being, be able to see the mural that was in Fort Myers, Florida, I was there twice last year, I thought, they don't want a south-facing wall because of the sun, they want walk-up accessibility somewhere that's public. And so I looked at the different options, there were a couple other that were best, but the one that I said, yes, is the fire station. And everybody still asked me, what happened to the last one? So I did pictures, I turned that in, and on March seventh, I was contacted again that we had been chosen. And so, you know, that was exciting. And we will have two hundred pieces in that. So now, my next part is I need people to paint pictures, because what this is, is, as you can see on your second page, the majority of this mural has already been done by people throughout the United States, prior Canada, who knows where else, that will be part of this. So we have two hundred pieces that will be part of that. And I have a whole list of things that I would like us as a community to do. So when people come here to see it, they go, that's Fort Morgan. You know, Rainbow Bridge, Glenn Miller, on and on and on. I have a whole great big list. And so I now have seven sites of places that we can have paint parties as such, because we, everything on this is a very short turnaround. We have to have those two hundred pieces painted by the end of April. Yeah. Because the mural is going to be unveiled somewhere between June fifth and fifteenth. So that is what is going on. And I have a Facebook page that is a global, I mean, it's a, not global, yeah, it's public, that I keep updating, telling what's going on. And so if you can find that, it's like global, what, I don't even remember what the name of it is, like Global Roots Mural of Fort Morgan. And I've had a lot of people to it, but it just keeps, I keep adding things to it so you know what's going to be happening to that. So, yeah, here I am, standing before you again, had no idea that I would be here once again so soon. But this is something exciting because, you know, Fort Morgan is hoping to have an art district. This is a big deal because it is an international mural thing. There are ones all throughout the United States, all the way through Canada, they're now in Scotland, Wales, Ireland, and Kay, and they want now to get into Australia and eventually all through the world. And little Fort Morgan will have one of those. So thank you for your time, and I gotta go because I gotta get to the block to have an interview.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
And even though we can't do any action on anything that's brought up during this time and everything like that, you definitely have heightened awareness, so. I agree. Thanks. Okay, next on the agenda is presentation of the Fort Morgan Volunteer Fire Department Annual Report. Mr. Bane.
Good evening, Mayor Calso. This year was a different year for us. We ran less calls, which is a good thing. We ran five hundred and sixty-six calls this year total between rural and city. City, we ran three hundred and ten calls, which was up by thirty from last year. So we didn't run near the grass fires we did that last year, so that's a good thing. Currently, we're at twenty-seven members. I believe, actually after tonight, we'll be at twenty-nine. So we're growing. It, it takes its toll. We have a couple guys getting ready to retire. We had a couple guys retire and then come back active reserves. So with those twenty-seven members, so between everybody last year, we had twenty-nine total. They logged fifteen hundred and twenty-seven hours of Tuesday night trainings, averages out to about fifty-three hours of firefighter. We logged eleven hundred and eighty-eight hours of auxiliary hours, that's hours outside of our Tuesday night trainings, that's EMT class. We sent a group over to Indianapolis for FDIC last year. We had a guy go out to Alabama and do a hazmat tech class through the National Fire Institute out there. That averaged to about forty-one dol- forty-one dollars, forty-one hours per member. So the guys outside even just their Tuesday nights are pretty active. Between all that, too, we had six officers combined for a hundred and twenty-four hours of leadership classes. And we had, I believe, four to five rookies throughout the year, averaged, or had a hundred and fifty-six hours of rookie training. So that's another night on top of everything else that we do. So total of all hours, we had two thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine hours of training just last year. So the guys really stepped up and put forth a good effort to keep our community safe with our training. So this year, we were able to take delivery finally of our training facility. It's over there. We are waiting on some gas parts to come in to be able to hook up our gas props for the gas fire props, and the electric, too, has to be ran to it. So hopefully, I gotta talk to those guys today. It sounds like the end of April, we'll have that up and running. So it won't be running when you guys come do your tour here in a couple weeks, unfortunately, but I can give you the gist of it. We did receive our new windows finally started today after waiting eight months, so we're, we're up and running with that. And we do finally start building our trucks. We're gonna head out in June, it sounds like, to Wisconsin to start building our tower and our engine. So that'll replace our tower we have now and our engine that we donated to Hill Rose last year for our new guys. So I guess Lauren's the only one new, so. But other than that, it's been a pretty productive year. So like I said, the guys really stepped up and made a difference. So we had a phenomenal year responding to calls. I believe we had ten to twelve guys per call. So that's, that's pretty, pretty good for volunteer status, so. And it's only getting better from here. We're getting younger, which is good, because we, we were kind of scarce there for a while. So, but that's all I have. Do you guys have any questions for us?
How many retired guys do we have?
Yeah, that's.
Just an idea.
I, it's over twenty, I know that much. Yeah, so there's quite a, quite a gap between those two. So, but I want to say about twenty.
So if you get, if you get behind, you could actually, will they come back?
Yeah, absolutely. We, we actually have a text group that if something happens, we can text out, and these guys, if they're available, they're still able, I can deputize them to come run trucks and help on scene, you know, fill bottles, pull hose, stuff like that. So, yeah, we actually have utilized our, our retired members. So we have two active retired, right now we call them, so they're retired, but they came back and they're, they're active, so.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
All I know is, we're thankful for you, and we really appreciate you guys.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys. We appreciate you guys, too, what you do for us, so.
How was last night?
What's that?
How did last night go?
Last night was last night, so. Yeah, we, we, I think it, about three hours out there, we got paged, well, it was longer than three, I think right at midnight, we all got home about three-thirty this morning. So it could have been a lot worse, but we got a good stop on it. So in, in a situation, you know, where it's at, that it could have gotten a lot worse, so.
No one hurt?
No one hurt, everybody's safe, everybody's sound, homeowners are out, so we're good.
Thank you.
So, yes. Thank you, guys, we appreciate you.
Thank you so much. Okay, next is local nonprofit organization presentation. Tonight, we're having the Morgan County Family Center.
Thank you. I'm gonna make sure I can run this first. There we go. My name is Mary Gross. I'm the Executive Director with the Morgan County Family Center. And interestingly enough, this presentation was not planned at the same time as I knew that they were coming. So this was a really ironic, beautiful opportunity to show you one of our programs in progress and not planned ahead. So the Family Center has a mission of connecting Morgan County families to the support and tools that help them be successful. We do this through a number of program areas. We offer parent education. Our Parents and Teachers Program is one of our programs that does home visitation for families that have children under the age of kindergarten entry. And we offer a nurturing fatherhood class as well. Our Parents and Teachers Program is done in the home. We, we do monthly visits, bi-monthly visits, depending on the needs of the family, and we are available to meet in the home, in the office, wherever they're comfortable. Really all about providing the support that parents need when their kids are young, and just providing that guidance and supporting them. So the nurturing fatherhood class is a twelve-week class that we offer. Juan Ayala is our facilitator. We've had a tough time getting that class filled. We have some interest in it, but we really need about five or six folks to really make a class go. And those, so those fathers that have attended that class, have left that class, feeling more empowered in their role as a, as a empowered in their role as a father, and their understanding of that, their role of nurturer is just as strong as motherhood is. And so that's really important. What most people know us for is our emergency financial assistance, or we call long-term intensive care management, family development. So we have a lot of folks that come to our door that need emergency financial assistance, rent, utilities, support that way. But our goal is really to help them with that immediate crisis need, but also to help them understand what were the barriers that got them to that situation? How do we help support them become more safe and stable long-term? And so it really works with, we have a team of five advocates that work with families long-term, and trying to help develop what are their goals? How do we help them support those goals? How do we get them more successful through maybe some financial health activities with themselves, maybe, maybe accessing other resources that they didn't know they qualified for, and what does that look like? And we do a lot of community education. Two of those classes are our Family Leadership Training Institute. It's a 20-week class. These folks behind me have committed to 20 weeks, four hours, once a week, talking about civic engagement, thus why they're here, talking about how they can utilize their voice in making a change happen in their community. So all of these folks are going to work on, are working on projects that they want to do in the community to impact change. And so all of them will have projects at the end that we will help financially support make happen. So they might come up here and speak in front of you at some point in the future. We'll see. No, no pressure, I just put on the participants there. We also offer Cooking Matters class. We are, learned a long time ago that one of the supports that we could provide is helping families cook healthy on a budget. And so helping families understand that they can cook at home, helping them come up with recipes that are healthy but on a budget. And so we offer that. It's a six-week class. During the pandemic, it got a little bit harder. We had to do that online. So, but we, we are really adaptive, and we try to work with whatever the gaps are in our community, and then how do we support that? So the Housing Resource Center started two years ago because of a gap in our community. Lauren will can speak to you later if you're interested, but Fort Morgan Cultures United for Progress came to you all back in the day and talked about the community assessment and the importance of housing in our community. And through that, was able to apply for some funding, came to us and said, okay, now we've got this great idea, let's build on what you're already doing. And so we took that and ran with that. So now we have a Housing Resource Center, have a staff of three that are working on foreclosure education, homebuyer education, really looking at landlord-tenant rights, and how do we support the housing community and the gaps that are happening in the community? So we are always looking at, what are the gaps in the community? How do we support, and how do we provide strength-based support for families in our community? We try to provide all of our material in at least the top three, if not the top four languages. Our staff is bilingual in many, many languages. And about the time I start to speak to them, I mix them all up, so I will not share those. Specifically, as a family center, we have been doing business for 29 years. There's a lot of times people, because we're a nonprofit, they don't look at us as a business. I'm here to say, we are a business in this community. We may not pay taxes from that perspective, but we do pay payroll taxes. So we have a staff of, one is not correct, that it would be 18 right now. So after you have 21, we have 18 staff. I think I was debating about, we were just hiring two staff that came on board yesterday, so I was trying to figure out my numbers. So 18 staff that are serving under our Morgan County Family Center programs. We also have three staff that are under what is known as the Morgan County Partnership for Children and Families. They're our designated early childhood council in Morgan County. We serve as the fiscal sponsor for them. We have locations in Fort Morgan and Brush. Last year's budget was about a million and a half. This year's budget is two and a half, almost $2.4 million. So I would beg to say, we are a pretty strong business in this community. We are members of both Brush and Fort Morgan Chamber of Commerce, a member of United Way, Member Agency of United Way Morgan County, and a member of the Family Resource Center Association. Just in 2023, we served 831 families. 401 services were tied to utilities, 412 were in housing. 390 is just helping folks fill out applications, applications that they qualified for, helping them maybe with social security disability, SNAP enrollment, Medicaid applications, just helping them assist folks get connected with the services that they qualify for. We had 58 families in our Parents vs. Teachers Program, 86 parents, and 548 visits in 2023. Here's an interesting note. About $30,000 came from our organization to the city of Fort Morgan to cover utilities for residents in Fort Morgan. We spent over $200,000 in emergency financial assistance in 2023. During the pandemic, that was about $300,000 to $350,000. When the pandemic hit, we were overwhelmed with the need. Our staff side didn't grow, but the numbers of folks that needed the services increased exponentially. So some pictures, because I think sometimes pictures can tell more than anything else. This is the entrance to our Fort Morgan office, if you haven't been there. Again, trying to be welcoming in multiple languages. Again, I didn't know they were coming. Family leadership training, these are some graduates from, I think it was last year. I don't remember for sure. During the pandemic, we worked with a lot of community organizations to put on several food distribution locations. This was one of them. There's a picture of one of our Cooking Matters classes, and the kids were getting into cutting knife safety, and again, cooking healthy on a budget. This is one of our Parents vs. Teachers Group Connection Meeting. So they were playing in the park. One of these times, great to follow the fire department, because we had the fire department there, actually on the picture on my right, that they came and were spraying the kids down during one of our group connections meetings. One of the volunteers was one of our Parents vs. Teachers dads at the time. That was a couple of years ago. And then a more recent picture of some of our parents and kids that are in that Parents vs. Teachers Program. A little bit of information about our homebuyer education. So this was our training that we were doing to talk about tenant training, and helping folks understand budgeting for state cooking skills, really how to be a good tenant, and take care of that property that you're taking care of. And then we do everything we can to participate in community events. So trick or treat trail. Some years are a little colder than others. This was one of our warmer years, so that was a better picture to show for you. So any questions I can answer for you?
Mary, you've been doing it a long time.
I have been doing this a long time.
Yes, you have. How many years?
24, I believe, I've been around, out of the 29 of the center. So, most of it. So, but, yes. So thank you. I appreciate Mary Lindell making the invitation, and certainly for you all, and your service, and listening to our work.
My question is, do you think you're going to be able to get along with the United Way still, now that they have a director?
Well, I don't, I don't know. You know, you know, when our, when our new United Way Director bailed from my organization, actually, it, what it did was it made us stronger, because you get the both of both worlds. So now you've got her, I would like to take credit for all the training I gave her. Just kidding, just kidding. But really, I think it's the best of both worlds, because we're still working together in a lot of the work that we started. She just has a different hat. And so I think the work is going to get even stronger, because of the model that we have, as far as working together and the collaboration. So, yes. But we have to give her a bad time when we can.
Well, I appreciate you coming and letting us know.
Thank you.
Just for the rest of council, in case you hadn't heard, we just have so many nonprofits doing stuff within the city. And when I was talking with the new director of the United Way, she'd told me that a lot of times, the nonprofits need the city to kind of get behind them when they're applying for grants or that sort of stuff. And so I thought that it'd be worthwhile for us to have, once a month, somebody come and just give us an idea of what's going on. Like, I had no idea the breadth of what you do at the Family Center. I knew a lot of it, but not all of it. So I do appreciate you coming out.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay. Next is an appointment Chuck Morgan to the Senior Center Advisory Board.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. I'm presenting Chuck Morgan as the fill-in for our last vacancy at this time on the board. Chuck is a retired teacher from Collici. We don't hold that against him. But Chuck's been very active. You probably know him from Flat Valley Band as the director. Been very active in our community. He's already active in the Senior Center as a participant. He has asked to be part of the board to help guide and steer in the next few years. And I submit his application to you for approval.
All right. Is there any discussion? All right. By motion?
Do we make a resolution, or just a?
No, a motion.
Just a motion.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to accept Chuck Morgan's application for the Senior Center.
Second. Who said second? You didn't? All right. So I have a motion by Jim Parks, a second by Doug Sashow. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right. Well.
Thank you.
Welcome to Mr. Morgan.
Yes.
All right. Next is presentation Possible Action on a Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Sign an Application for a Community Development Block Grant for Gateway Village Apartments. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is an identical, almost, resolution to one you approved a few weeks ago, I think, maybe a month or month and a half. But it's, the management company for Gateway Village has applied for a $5 million grant, and we were asked to be the fiscal agent on that. And we told them that the mayor has to sign all documents. So we passed a resolution authorizing Kevin to sign all the paperwork on this grant application. The management company put Brent's name on everything, and had, had it done via DocuSign and everything. And so they had all these, you know, digital copies and everything. So, and they were right up against the deadline, which was last Friday, I think. So we just did the same resolution authorizing Brent to sign it. And he signed the stuff to allow them to make their deadline. So.
How much trouble is he in if we do not pass a resolution tonight?
He's not here.
Because I may not entertain a resolution.
He is in Nebraska. He might not be coming along.
Uh-oh.
Okay. Well, I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, make a resolution to approve the city manager to approve and sign the application for community development block grant for Gateway Village Apartments.
Second. Okay, that's second. Second. Okay. All right. Have motion by John Caper and a second by Jim Parks. All those favor vote by roll call, or just vote by roll call?
That resolution carries on unanimous vote of six to zero, with Councilmember Moreford absent.
Okay. Next is presentation Possible Action on a Resolution Regarding City Bank Accounts. Ms. Edson?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I wrote a memo, so I'll just kind of summarize that. We have our healthcare checking account, which Lucent, who's our administrator, they pull funds from there to pay all of our, to pay the healthcare claims that we have. We're currently set up with a local bank, but the people who are actually signing the checks from Lucent don't want to provide personal information in order to get set up with our, as signers with our, with our local bank. And they're pushing us to use the bank that they use with all their other customers, which is Pinnacle. So basically, the resolution is amending our other banking resolution to add Pinnacle as a bank account that we can use. And we will just start using that in place for healthcare claims. Any questions?
Any questions or discussion?
Just, just the thing that, that you're, the money's going to Pinnacle Bank instead of going to the local bank.
Correct. Yeah. Yes.
All right.
Do you have any issues with that?
I, I don't know. I've looked into their plan, and they were, they're going to give us, we will be pushing funds to them. So they will ask us, they will send us a report of what they're planning to play, pay for claims, and make sure that we agree with that. We'll push funds to them to pay the claims, and then they give us access to reconcile the account, so that we can ensure that we're still in agreement with what they're paying. So I don't have any concerns.
Are they going to kick back, or why do they want to do that?
No.
So they're just going to be a pass-through?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I'd offer a resolution to add Pinnacle Bank on the city treasurer's account.
Banking resolution, yeah.
Second. Okay. All right, Jim. All right. So I have a resolution by Lauren and a second by Jim. Vote by roll call?
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next is consent agenda. Mr. Brennan?
We've got number nine first.
You skipped one.
It's a really intriguing report.
I've marked it out. All right. Well, tell you what, why don't we get to the annual report then?
Hey, there you go.
Thank you. If you remember, the last few years, we've been talking about that COVID year, and our stats just didn't make any sense, because we didn't know what to make of them. So this is the first year we've had those three years since that COVID year. Couple things I'll point out. I know you've gotten copies of this the other day, and there's a lot of information in there, so I'll be happy to answer questions you have. But just a couple things I thought were interesting that we might point out was, our traffic accidents were down about 41 last year. Not coincidentally, we had about 500 more traffic citations last year, which typically has an impact on that. Also, despite what you might think after hearing what we heard tonight, crime overall was down about 30% in the last three years. We've had, we've seen a steady decrease of overall crime of 30% in the past three years. With some exceptions going up, most things have gone down. Sexual assaults have risen, aggravated assaults have risen. But most every other crime has decreased since that time. So those are just a few things that I wanted to point out. But of course, there's lots more information, and I'm open for any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Not with the report.
All right. Anybody have any questions, further discussion? Okay. Well, thank you. Now, consent agenda. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight's consent agenda includes Item A, approval of the disbursements and payroll for February, and Item B, approval of the minutes of the March 5, 2024 City Council Regular Meeting. All matters on the consent agenda are considered routine business by the council, and will be enacted with a single motion, a single vote by roll call. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is deemed necessary, that item should be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
All right. Is there any discussion? Okay, I'd entertain a resolution.
Yeah, Your Honor, I'd like to make a resolution to accept the consent agenda.
Second. Okay. All right. So have a resolution by Jim Parks, a second by Bill Garcia. Vote by roll call?
That resolution carries unanimously.
Okay. Reports by officials and staff.
So, Your Honor, just a couple things. I don't, I don't know if you saw the social media post we put out, but last few days, just within the last week or so, we did make a couple arrests using our Canine and Drug Detective. In that, we recovered some cocaine, meth, fentanyl, over $10,000 in cash, and two guns, including guns that were stolen. So we have been actively working that for a while. But that was actually some pretty good work in just a short time that happened. On top of that, on Saturday, we did a set operation. The special enforcement team worked at an operation, knowing that it was St. Patrick's Day. So we had four hours we dedicated to working DUI patrol, essentially. And we ended up making two DUI arrests, a warrant arrest, and a driving under revocation arrest within that timeframe on Saturday night. That was just based on this special operation. So we've been hitting that pretty hard. And those are things that we've done in the past when it comes to DUI, but also school zone enforcement, some different high saturation patrols. We will continue to do those throughout the year, but just wanted to report back on that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question, Lauren. What's the status with asset forfeiture, since we're co-op now, or funded officer through the state?
No, we don't have any funding for an officer through the state. When you're talking asset forfeiture, what used to happen when we would seize funds, yeah, we, we now can. I don't know that the DA's office will do it unless it was a very large amount, because we would collect less than 50% between the DA's office and us. The state takes 50% off the top. It's not worthwhile. We are joining the HSI with Task Force Officer. When we're working with the federal government, any seizures we get, they can take their 10% and and give us anything else with it, up to, you know, 90% or whatever. So, so if we're looking at asset forfeitures, it's usually coming through the federal system as opposed to the state system now.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't really have anything. I just would point out that Brent's not here. Obviously, he's at the NMPP Annual Conference in Lincoln, and he will be back late Thursday, probably.
Okay.
If the weather cooperates.
All righty. Anything else? All right. Bids, meetings, and announcements. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city is currently accepting sealed bids for the purchase of Emco three-yard trash containers until 3:00 PM on March 22, and bids for 2024 wastewater collection system relining projects until 3:00 PM on March 29. Under meetings, the city council's annual budget retreat will be next Tuesday, March 26, at 5:00 PM at the Senior Center. The Heritage Foundation Board is scheduled to meet the 28th at 4:00 PM in the museum community room. And the next city council regular meeting will be on April 2. It will begin with a tour starting at 4 o'clock, and that tour will end out at the water treatment plant by Wiggins, and that's where we'll have the meeting.
Okay. Anything else, anybody? All right. We'll now go to executive session for discussion of personnel matter under CRS Section 24-6-402 and not involving any specific employees who request a discussion of the matter in open session. Any member of this body or elected official, the appointment of any person to fill an